So that is a proud example of why we are here, our students, and we always need to remember that that's our purpose. It is the students and the future of North Carolina in this nation. Well, thank you very much. Hey, well, that was invigorating. Our secretary, Mr. Paul, please. Ms. August Neil?
Yeah.
Mr. Bullock?
Here.
Mr. Brian?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Dr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Codis?
Here.
Mr. McCullen? Mr. Meekins?
Here.
Mr. Patel?
Here.
Mr. Pryor?
Here.
I am present, Ms. Van?
Present.
Ms. White?
Yeah.
It's the chairman of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. As Chair of the Board of Trustees, it is my responsibility to remind all members of the Board under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and repartances of conflict of interest as required by the Act. Receive the agenda and related information for this Board of Trustees meeting. If any conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the Board of Trustees at this meeting, the conflict or appearance of conflict should be identified at this time. Any conflicts? Okay, great, hearing none. I'm going to move to the approval of a consent agenda. Having read the materials listed in the consent agenda, is there any item that needs to be to the discussion portion of either the open or closed session agenda? Take a look and let me know. I give members a few minutes. I see that there is approval of minutes. There were some also some just a note on this, little bit of anomaly evidently. In twenty-two, we had, ma'am. Yeah, yeah, I know, I was gonna say about that, we have two thousand twenty-two minutes that were, for whatever reason, left off the consent agendas of those meetings. So our, our, our crack governance team, which I want to thank them for that and their attention to detail, Paulette, thank you very much. Call that so that we could make sure that our, our records and our minutes are complete. So yes, that is a correct statement of twenty-twenty-two. All right, everybody's had a chance to look, go have a motion to approve. I have a motion from Trustee Davis, a second from Vice Chair Pryor. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, all right, it passes, thank you very much. Well, good morning, I, I, I said last night, so those of you that heard this, before I left for Chapel Hill, I like to as much as possible, you know, eat dinner with family and my kids, and I have a, I have a thirteen-year-old who, and those of you who have or have had thirteen-year-olds know that they, that that's the part of their life when they really start liking to discuss things with parents. And so he asked me, he said, he said, well, what are you gonna do in Chapel Hill? I told him, I said, well, you know, I'm really excited about going to the collaboratory for the opening, and I've got this board meeting or whatever. I said, there's a lot of important stuff going on at Chapel Hill. So I'm looking forward to it, he says, well, you know, what you really need to do when you're in Chapel Hill is you need to check on Armando. Make sure that he's gonna stay. And he says, while you're at it, get, get, look at the rest of the transfer portal. So anyway, with that in mind, welcome to the March meeting. Carolina continues to be a national leader. Yesterday, the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor and many in this room had the honor, as I just stated, of attending the ribbon cutting that signified the opening of the North Carolina Collaboratories home here on campus in the Kenan Labs building. We were honored to host the President Pro Tem of the North Carolina Senate, Senator Phil Berger, who brought congratulations from the legislature. The work that Dr. Jeff Warren has done with the collaboratory is yet another example of how we are leading the nation at Chapel Hill. The idea of the collaboratory was to leverage the research engine of North Carolina's universities to inform policymakers and improve the lives of North Carolinians and ultimately to make the world a better place. I was honored to be allowed to give some brief remarks during the moment and was reminded that when the collaboratory was first proposed, media accounts stated, and I will quote directly, "The creation of the collaboratory was prompting concern among environmentalists and faculty who fear, fear political pressure will get in the way of sound science." Well, those fears were unfounded, and after the legislature's continued confidence in Dr. Warren's team and the confidence the legislature has placed in the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, our faculty, our chancellor, our administration, the collaboratory has supported projects and researchers at universities across the state. Research into areas that include COVID and its effects, chemical contamination in water, water and energy resources across the, our state, and they are solving the problems and great challenges of our time. The collaboratory was an idea that now is a game changer. With that in mind, I would, I would be remiss if I didn't mention, since our last meeting, that this board supported the idea of a school for civic life and leadership at our last meeting. Nearly identical criticism that bubbled at the thoughts of the collaboratory has surfaced from the same sources at the idea that Carolina can in fact be a leader in civil discourse in teaching today's college students the skills of communication, debate and understanding. Ideas that make a difference come from many places. They don't always come from one source. And I'm proud that at Carolina, as our chancellor often says, "We are the most public of public universities." Therefore, it should not surprise anyone that this board, which is actively pushed to make Carolina the greatest university in the world, would support the idea of following through on a commitment to take the public, the program for public discourse's modeling of civil discourse into the classroom. It's an idea that should be fully developed, and I hope that it is, through all proper processes and channels. And it's an idea that not only will be a model for the nation, but it's an idea that can really shape and foster the future leaders of North Carolina, the nation and the world. The board also discussed and is poised to today to express its support for the Board of Governors' policy against compelled speech on campus. A university is not a place of indoctrination, it's a place of enlightenment where open debate and ideas are synthesized to produce smart leaders that ideas, and ideas that, as I said earlier, can positively affect our state, nation and the world. With that kind of thought, last night, the board had a really great opportunity and, and Chancellor Gushwick's one, thank you for having Dean Raul Race eat dinner with us, he's a member of the faculty, dean of the Journalism School, who this board approved his appointment as the dean. And we were honored to be able to spend some time at the Curtis Media Center. If you've not had a chance to visit that facility on campus, I will tell you, it is worth a visit. And this university owes a great debt of gratitude to Don Curtis and his family for helping to financially support the construction and development of that facility on campus as part of the Journalism School. And, and I would, I know Don's not here, but maybe he's watching, but I would offer him a round of applause for that. It's leadership like that that changes the world and makes a difference. That facility and what Dean Race is doing exemplifies the very essence of a modern experiential learning environment. I recall at my first or second board meeting, being a part of the board that approved the final design of the building. And now, in fewer than four years, that place is a learning environment that is producing graduates who are shaping the new ways that news and information is delivered. It really is an exciting place to be. It was also invigorating for me personally, and I'll speak personally, I won't speak for members of the board, but they may have had a similar experience, to spend some time with Dean Race, who talked to several of us at the end of the table about how he came to the United States from a town located in the Amazon Rainforest by way of a Rotary Scholarship. And eventually stayed and got his education here in the United States and has become a leader in the field of journalism and is, of course, now the dean of our Journalism School, which I am a proud graduate. We continue on this board to endeavor in, in civil discourse. Now, civil discourse doesn't always mean you agree. It doesn't mean there aren't gonna be tough questions and sometimes difficult answers. But it means that everyone has the chance to speak to an issue and contribute and be accepted with respect. So I'll close with another issue that I think is very important. And that is that we, as a board and a university, remain committed. And I know the Chancellor and his team is committed to improving and supporting the mental health of our students. Our faculty and our staff and the entire campus community deserves and needs support. Yesterday, I want to thank Trustee Jones and the Strategic Initiatives Committee, who brought before us a, a spectrum of faith leaders on campus who are making a difference in students' lives. We expect to hear more from faith leaders across campus in future meetings. Thank you, Dr. Jones. The, the strong mental health of our campus community takes an effort from all of us. You know, at lunch yesterday, we heard from Coach Matt Brown, who gave a powerful testimonial about a former football player who now comes back and, and talks to players. It was Coach Brown and his wife Sally's open ear that changed that young man's life. So if you're a professor, a staff member, a student, a coach, and even a trustee, have an open ear and have a willingness to help someone. You really never know how the, how, how you can change and affect a person's life. And I think that's very important, given the state of affairs, particularly with our young people. But don't forget your colleagues and don't forget those who are close to you and, and just maybe somebody you meet on the street. All right, with that said, I will, well, I'm gonna, before I go, before I do that, I'm gonna go ahead and, and let Ms. Van go, I'll call on the student body president, your last meeting, and want to thank you for all your service to the board. It's been a pleasure getting to know you, you and I had lunch before your first meeting. And I really enjoyed getting to know you and watching you thrive and contribute on the board. So take it away with your last address.
I do want to ask, are we able to show those slides? I pray so. Awesome, thank you. Hello, everybody. It's very strange talking to you all from over here, but I guess this is the time to get used to it, right? Um, it has been so amazing getting to work with all of you this year, getting to be in this room, not only in like engaging with you, but with all the people who have been in our meetings all year, that we get to talk to during little breaks and things, but also in meetings outside of this space. So just thank you all again for being here to like teach me so much and allowing me to engage in this space so fully. I prepared for you all a presentation today that I'm very excited for. I'm sure it's not surprising to you that I don't enjoy talking about myself a ton, like the work that I do. But in preparing this presentation, I spent a lot of time thinking about what it is I really wanted to share with you. And what that is, is the incredible work that's been done, not only by myself this year, because I have to acknowledge that, but my team. I'm so, so, so proud of our cabinet and all of our EBO officers and every member of like general staff in the executive branch for doing a lot of work that I think is gonna set the foundation for student government to only get better as we continue to move forward. And so I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about some key initiatives just in my office this year, and then talk about cabinet and then some different things in our executive board. I know we talk in every meeting about our meetings running a really, really long, and so want to acknowledge I could stand up here for hours and talk about all the things that we do, but did want to highlight these few things that were really near and dear to us as we organized our work. So to start, our first major event of the year was the Redirect the Rage Rally, that was a really cool event. There were a lot of students, I think, and community members and faculty and staff who were in that space as well, who I think were feeling a lot of, I think, pain and just concern about some different political things happening in our state and just concerned about what women's healthcare in North Carolina looks like. I know that students all across our campus just are on different sides of this issue. It is really important to our administration to create a space for those students who did want to be able to join in community in this period of time, that was really difficult to have that space. And we had a really cool speaker come out, we were able to connect with the Governor's Office and get some remarks for them for that event. And that was something that we were really proud of early on, and I think just gave us an opportunity to start off on the right foot in communicating to our students that the issues that they bring to us, we're gonna do our best to address in time and fashion. We were able to host UNC Student Voting Day, and this was the first annual Student Voting Day event to celebrate our civic duty and just to encourage students who are able to vote to do so, encourage students who are not able to vote to still come out and just participate in a community event where you got to meet lots of other students, got to meet different community members who are engaged in the political space. And I think just take a moment to kind of step outside of what can be this huge slush of people coming at you with registration tables and things, asking you to vote, but not really getting to connect with you on a personal level. And we were really glad at the conclusion of this event all throughout the day to be getting reports from the different poll workers that we were collaborating with, so many students were showing up and just saying, hey, I'm here for UNC Student Voting Day. We communicated to students, was all on the bell tower quads, like right where our bell tower is, there's gonna be lots of fun activities, food, games, just free stuff for any student who wants to come and like participate. You don't have to do anything at all to be here, we just hope that you will take the time to vote, whether it's today or if you voted already. And it was really amazing to see our students be so receptive to that event that we were able to put together for them. And we hope that next year we'll be able to continue in that model, or student government will be able to continue in that model and just consolidate resources, because we have more than a thousand registered student organizations, it just doesn't make sense to have everybody kind of siloed doing their own thing, we want to reach more students than that. Honoring the James, honoring James Lewis Cage Jr. with the memorial this year. I think that for me, my journey with James Lewis Cage Jr. and his family began as a first-year student here. I was just a student who was interested in Black Student Movement and really quickly became the first-year class council chair for that space and got to know their higher leadership and found out about this just through their mentorship. And it immediately was something to me as a Black student that I wanted to be able to affect some change on. And in doing that research, so much of it I did with my partner and such a close friend of mine, Julia Clark, found that the only way to get a memorial approved for someone on campus, like their name, is through the Board of Trustees. And so I'm so grateful to have been able to work in this space to bring that memorial to our campus and to have that event this year that I got to see a few of you at as well. Want to take a moment to thank Chancellor Gushwick's for all of his work on that memorial. And I know that all working relationships are about trust. And I'm really grateful to have built a lot of trust with you in this year and really early on in communicating with you as a leader on this campus, I think made clear to you just how important this is to students and communicated that there are a lot of people who are concerned that we are just kind of staying in the past if we don't, if we were to bring this here, and really emphasized in that conversation, all those conversations, that Black students on this campus especially are not able to look forward until we address what happened in the past. And so I'm just so thankful again to this board for being the board that brought the James Lewis Cage Memorial to our campus after fifty-one long years. And we recently had an accessibility direct action that I was really proud to be a part of, myself and several other student activists, I'd say most prominently Loura Cebedo, if you guys haven't had an opportunity to meet her, and Megan Murphy, they were the presidents of the Campus Y this year and organized a direct action where themselves and several other students, including myself, slept outside of South Building for thirty-two hours to commemorate a period of time where Loura, as a wheelchair-bound student, was stuck with another wheelchair-bound student, Eleanor Bolton, in their dorm for thirty-two consecutive hours. I know that accessibility work is something that's never done, like all the work that we do, we have to continue to improve if we're gonna be able to accurately meet the needs of all students. But this has been a problem for a really, really long time. I know that we've got deferred maintenance issues and there are just a lot of different sides of it that we have to address. But I was really proud to use my platform and to work with you, Trustee Davis, and you, Chancellor Gushwick's as well. Provost Clemens came out and spoke with students on that day. And just I've been looking forward to all the work that we do moving forward to make sure that we are keeping our promise to all students, that this is a space where they are able to belong and just receive a quality education. Acknowledging that's not really possible if you can't be moved out of your dorm or if you can't get into a classroom that you have in the first couple of weeks because it's not accessible. I'm just a couple more small things. We, I say small, but they're really important to me. And we passed this year a resolution codifying opposite constituency speaking time in this space. And I'm really proud of that, as you know, we have such a unique and rich student self-governance system. And a part of that means that in any given year, our student body president could be a grad student or an undergraduate student. We've not had our first grad student in Carolina's history yet, and I'm really excited for one day soon, when I think that that is gonna happen. But up until that time, we will only have an undergraduate in this space speaking for the issues of students. And while that individual will always have an obligation to speak for both constituencies, this board took the initiative to make sure that in the event that that responsibility is not being met, there's a safeguard in place so that no constituency on our campus has their voice like cut out of this space. We were able to facilitate a really cool reform of transition for student government in our codes this year. I think that I've talked a lot with you all this year about what my transition into student government was, being like an outsider in that space and how, if not for my leadership and Black Student Movement as the largest cultural organization on this campus, I don't know that I would have been able to do this job well. In fact, I know that I wouldn't have been able to, because the skills that I learned as BISM president were so valuable. And it was, it's difficult to, I think, do well in student government if you don't already have that institutional knowledge or if you're not handed a really thorough transition. And so I'm working really hard at this time to transition our new student body president, Christopher Everett, who I'll be introducing to you all at the end of this. But also worked really hard to make sure that this joint student code and our undergraduate student code as well reflects that transition so that it's not something just kind of left up to chance each year and like we have to draw it out ourselves, so we can make sure that we're not losing that really critical information to having a successful year. We operated our team this year with a cabinet collaboration model for success, which I'm really proud of. I think there was a lot of resistance to it early on by some people, but it's worked really well. Our plan was to have all of our cabinet co-directs, we have six different cabinets, my chief of staff, we're gonna talk to you guys a little bit about. But we had each of them agree that for every event that they have during the year, they must collaborate with at least one student organization. My thought process being there are at least a thousand RSOs on our campus. And every opportunity that we get to engage with them, if we bring them into the planning room with us, they're that much more likely to continue working with student government and to feel connected and not isolated from this space. And that'll be a great way to start to break down some of the barriers people are visualizing of student government not being an accessible space. I think that that has been a really successful all their work. And we've worked on my office of Free Student Press Initiative that we're kind of rounding out now on these last few days. I think the main student, or the main publication that students engage with on campus, of course, is the Daily Tar Heel. And there are lots of Daily Tar Heel press boxes across campus. I believe the Carolina Review has a couple of press boxes as well. But I think that they are the only two student organizations that have access to those. It's a student government right now was finishing up an initiative to bring those newspaper boxes to seven or eight other student organizations that have newspapers so that students can have easier access to that information and be able to see what's happening on campus from more than just one or two sources that get the majority of the attention. In addition to that work, we have just been working really, really hard to make sure that student government, again, is accessible and that the communication that we're sending to students is transparent and they can understand what's happening, but also reach us really effectively, whether that be through our social media, our email, through my bi-weekly office hours that we've held this year, three to five, where any student can just drop in the student government suite to ask me any question they want during campaign season, a lot of that was just people asking how to become student body president. But the conversations are really fun, and so we're glad to have reached out to people in those ways. And speaking of our cabinet, I want to talk to you all a little bit about some of the events that they put together, all of which kind of feed into this platform tracker that they put together with our chief of staff at the beginning of the year. And we're just really, really glad that they have been able to make such positive strides in that work.
Hello. President, things are like the last ten minutes, so appreciate your patience. Hello, my name is Victoria Bryant, and I've had the honor of serving as the undergraduate executive branch chief of staff alongside the wonderful Talia Van, who is not only my friend, but also my sincere sorority sister and then and so I'm just gonna take some time to talk about the wonderful work that our cabinet has done this semester. As President Van had just recently outlined, we did operate from a cabinet collaboration model of success, and so with that have just seen an expansion in all of the work that traditionally cabinet has done. In the past, I think a lot of the work has been advocacy and policy oriented and very insulated in student government. And so we're really intentional about charging cabinet to establish those relationships with a plethora of stakeholders across campus and think that led to some really intentional and innovatively crafted operations, and so I'm just gonna speak about that a little bit. And so, starting with the Department of Academic Affairs and Professional Development, two of their highlighted events were the first year and transfer student career building events. And so with those events, the, there was a desire to support early on career development for first year and transfer students, I think, because the first two years in your time here at Carolina, you're required to take general education curriculum, there's not really an opportunity to get involved in your natural curiosities as those more tailored academic experiences come in the latter half of your collegiate career. And so wanting to equip these specific student populations with the necessary skillsets that they need to navigate introverts and to really professionally rigorous and diverse landscapes, academic landscapes. And then we also charged them with the administration of two specific surveys, the Campus Weed Out Survey, which addresses the and acknowledges the weed out culture in intro STEM courses as harmful to student well-being. And there's advocating for grade forgiveness in that sense, I think a lot of people tend to come in econ or bio or chem and take chem one-on-one, chem one-on-two and so on and so forth, and don't do great in those classes, and that really affects their confidence coming in and it causes them to internalize that and believe that they don't have the necessary intellectual capacities or academic skillsets to thrive in those particular landscapes. And so really wanting to get to the root of that and understand the circumstances that are creating that culture in such difficult classes. And another initiative was the incorporation of equity scorecards in all university departments, just assess treatment and fairness in competitive course settings. This is a collaboration with our Department of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion as well, and think that having such scorecards and just an understanding of the different equitable circumstances might make it easier for non, quote unquote, non-traditional and or marginalized student populations to continue to drive, to thrive in those spaces. Another initiative is the Campus Eldercare and Childcare Services. And this is in collaboration with our campus, our Department of Campus Life and Student Experiences. And what this does specifically is understanding where resources can be allocated to support resources for childcare and eldercare, seeing as we do have some non-traditional students, and so we do have students who come in and perhaps are caring for family and are caring for perhaps older family members, and that might affect their ability to become involved in just the collegiate opportunities and things of that nature. And so then, shifting to campus life and student experiences, the expansion of off-campus broadband, the expansion of the off-campus broadband internet initiative, I believe that this was something that was initiated during COVID, but ultimately wanting to see the rollout of that program continue. There was also the Carolina Connections Program, and this was a really exciting program, because what this does is it connects different student populations across campus and with a particular priority on first-year students, military and veteran students, international students and transfer students, students who might have a bit more of a difficult transition navigating into Carolina's student ecosystem. Perhaps if you don't live on campus or there's a language barrier or there's just some aspect of your ID and V where you're not able to facilitate those connections in the executive branch, really wanting to use its resources to create a space to bring students together. And so then we have civic life and outreach services. And so previously, President Van mentioned the UNC Student Voting Day. And so this was a really exciting initiative, I believe this was the more, the most direct initiative in collaboration between cabinet and the executive. and the executive office of the president. But in this collaboration, we just got to see our cabinet co-directors, specifically Van Adams Thompson and BJ Killman, who are the co-directors of Civic Life and Outreach Services, just thrive and go out into the community and facilitate connections with different small businesses to just galvanize and bring together and foster a really fun way for students to stay civically engaged. There was also the I Serve Campaign, which just brought attention to all the servant-oriented, all the servant-oriented leadership that is happening on campus outside of student government. I think it's really easy to get into these positions and at times let that go to your head. And so I think what this campaign did, which is bring attention to all the ways in which students outside, inside of student government are making those connections with the community. Then for diversity, equity, inclusion, previously mentioned the departmental equity assessment and audit, and those things are continuing to happen as well with the rollout and distribution of that survey coming in the coming weeks. And then environmental affairs, I personally have been really proud of the work that our environmental affairs department has done. This is the first time that the environmental affairs department has been codified in student government's cabinet. And so I think the codification of this department has just led to the expansion of environmental awareness via the establishment of it, the establishment of it as an official department. I think it just legitimizes the role that environmental sustainability has on this campus. And so the event that I'm really excited about is the upcoming Sustainable Strut Event, which is a fashion show with, where all the vendors are sustainable, like it's sustainably made clothing. And so what it really does is it charges students, faculty and just a plethora of Carolina stakeholders to understand their role and just sustainability, ecological footprint, and just like their consumer behaviors as well. And so there will be a fashion show, but then following the fashion show, there will be vendors and sales where students get to engage with local small businesses and sustainable-made clothing. And then also just continue to establish policy connections between the undergraduate student government as well as the graduate and professional student government on a climate action day. And then last but not least, we have the work of our Student Wellness and Safety Department, which, with what we see as a collaboration with the JED Campus Foundation, in which they come in and do really intensive research about just the mental health culture on Carolina's campus specifically, and then offer really tailored policy prescriptions and an understanding of how we can implement mental health reform in a way that is considerate to our specific collegiate circumstances. There's also been research on the step care model as a framework for mental health approaches. And so they've initiated a lot of those conversations with the senior leadership at CAPS and Dean of Students and as well as accessibility services. And then we've seen collaboration with CAPS on the Heals Care Network reform. I believe just given a lot of the issues that have happened in the last couple of years, students have felt really isolated and not really sure where to go in terms of getting mental health resources. And so one of our foremost initiatives when we were drafting up the campaign in this platform was to make sure there was a centralized hub where students could connect and access all of these resources, realizing that that already existed and it was the Heals Care Network. And so it just came right on time. And so what we've seen is Student Wellness and Safety really collaborating with those stakeholders to continue to make that as centralized and as accessible as possible. Thank you all for your time.
Just want to highlight some of the major initiatives done by like different members of the executive branch, like officers this year, like our EBO, our Director of State and External Affairs, Raina Young, who's amazing. She's done a lot of work this year collaborating with different bars on Franklin for Angel Shot programming. I'm not sure if everyone in here is familiar with that, but the idea is that there's a list or like a thing called an angel shot, and you give these informational things to bartenders, places like Midaswell and Goodfellows, places we know a lot of students frequent, and also hung them up in a lot of like the bathrooms and private areas in those bars. They let you know if you're needing help, you can ask the bartender for any number of these things. And I think the most severe of which is being going up and asking for an angel shot. And I know that you need perhaps a ride home or need someone to stay with you. And we just thought it was really important to campus safety and make sure the students were aware of that resource. We have over a hundred external appointments in any given year to fill. At the beginning of this year, we worked really hard just to identify what external appointment positions were no longer relevant to the work that we're doing on campus and which ones were perhaps just kind of repeats of things that already existed and got ourselves down to a list of one hundred and thirty-three. And we're able to fill more than eighty-five percent of those appointments this year. We're really proud of that work because obviously these people exist and work within student government, but they aren't necessarily members of EBO or general staff for our branch. And so it's really helpful in that really early initiative that we set to be outreach-ing to every part of campus that we can, and so the student government won't feel like it's just a siloed bubble where only a specific group of people get to work. And also to make sure that people understand that your contributions on this campus as a student and like activist, a leader, aren't only valuable if you're working in the student government space directly as well. And we were able to, in addition to those transitional reforms to the student code that I mentioned earlier, just make some structural changes, little things that don't make sense, correction some language or different contradictions inside of the student code. We consistently go back to the importance of our instruments, and if they aren't proper, then we get into some really confusing conversations. And so it's really proud to work alongside Speaker Christian Phillips and Rules and Judiciary Chair Andrew Gary and the Undergraduate Student Senate on some of these reforms over the course of the year. And we began the year with the bipartisan speaker series that I was really excited for. Speaker Phillips and our vice president kind of alternated choosing, I guess, the conservative and liberal speakers to come to campus. I think at different moments, there were students who were perhaps not pleased with some of the speakers that were selected, and we were still able to have these events and students who wanted to come out and to hear them got an opportunity to. To me, I think it's equally beautiful that we get that experience as well as students who perhaps are not happy about what we're doing, getting the space to protest if they're displeased or to verbalize what they're not happy with the student government is doing, whether it's the Senate or our branch, just using their voices online or together in different spaces. And so was really glad that the bipartisan speaker series got conversation started across campus, whether it was in the room where the event was happening or outside of that space. We have had our undergraduate student treasurer, Logan Grodsky, working really hard with Finance Chair Dennis Erdl on finance reform for like our reimbursement process. Just to give you guys a quick overview of how that works, you can apply for funding from the undergraduate senate as a student organization, but the way our system works right now is you have to spend all of that money. Large quantities of money. It's a very easy thing to do, some larger cultural organizations, I think, also have an easier time with it. But it is, I think, much more difficult for our really small organizations that need the Senate's money more so than others to be able to access it. And so we've worked really hard this year to try and figure out a way around that barrier. But we have been working hard to get under the hood and take a look at what's wrong so that hopefully next year and years to come, we can get some positive forward motion. And then we were also able to this year facilitate the creation of an advisory council to the Dean of Arts and Sciences as well as the provost, and we're really glad to be able to do that. There was already a student advisory committee to the chancellor, but every chance that we get to bring students into those spaces with stakeholders, rather than speaking through a stakeholder like myself or Victoria, we think that it's valuable because there's so much to be, I think, gained from them by getting to connect with you in a direct way. Just kidding. Yeah, just pretend it's not all super jumbled together. But lastly, I just wanted to talk to you all a little bit about some areas that I think are really important just to keep your eye on moving forward. It really struck me, I think, yesterday, Trustee Pryor, when you were saying that you hadn't heard about accessibility issues on campus and like your three years on this board. I think that it is one hundred and ten percent my responsibility or the responsibility of whoever is in this position to make sure that you are aware of what's going on, not only to stand up here and to tell you, here are all the wonderful things that me and my team did this year, but to say, here's where we've done a lot of really amazing work and here's where there is work to be done and to trust that people coming in after are going to be able to positively move those action items forward. And so in the interest of doing that, just want to touch on accessibility issues as well. I know I talked about it a little bit at the beginning and so won't say very more, very much more, but I just want to take a moment to acknowledge how important it is. I'm so excited to, in two months, be graduating from a leading university. And so I think just in that same spirit, we have to continue to show up for all of our students and make sure that they're able to have an equitable experience in their time on Carolina's campus. Want to talk a little bit about addressing ALE reform. I've heard concerns from a lot of different students this year and have had some conversations with our chancellor and with the chief of UNCPD about ALE, alcohol law enforcement on campus. I don't know that ALE's presence on campus is a problem at all, I couldn't say. But I do know that there are students who are not clear on what their rights are when engaging with those people. And I think instances where people may be on Franklin Street or going to like parties just on frat quarter, different places on campus and engaging with ALE officers and are just not sure what's going on because oftentimes they are allowed to be in plain clothes and don't necessarily have to, I think, give students identifying information. And so we just want to make sure that sometime soon, we're able to get proper education to students about what their rights are in that space to just prevent some occurrences, I think, like we've seen this year with students, I'm just engaging with them in a way that just creates concern when other students kind of see videos and things across campus. And I want to talk a little bit about bolstering cultural majors and minors. The triple AD minor, I'm really glad that we have it on our campus, but it is really difficult. I don't know any triple AD students who don't have like eighty or ninety pages of reading to do in any given night for their classes, and that would be fine. My thought process is that technically I'm the English major, it's like an English and conflict person, and I'm having to do significantly less reading than you are perhaps in your class. I think the workload is just not manageable. And the way that it exists right now, it creates a barrier for students even wanting to study it because you would have to sign up for a course load that you know is comparable to a chem student or a bio student here, when you're not studying chem or bio, you're studying African and African-American diaspora studies. We spoke at the dedication for Hortense McClintock and Henry Owl about Indigenous Studies as a program at UNC and how we were at risk of losing that program this year because there weren't enough students to participate, but also acknowledging that I think only one percent of our campus, as far as admitted students, are Indigenous students. And so wanting to make sure that we're able to continue to provide the support in that space. So the students who are coming here and like bringing us all the value that they have are able to get whatever value they want out of our campus. There's been a lot of conversation lately amongst some different Asian-American student organizations about the desire to see an Asian-American studies department derive itself at UNC. And so I think that's something we could have some really exciting conversations about so that all students are able to find their niche corner at Carolina. One more thing I think I had on that last slide was just the importance of having really stable and competent leadership and student government advisors. I don't bring that up to say that it's something that we're lacking. In fact, I bring it up to say the opposite. Brian Lackman and Aaron Bockenheimer, who you all got to hear a presentation from yesterday when we're talking about just ministries and religious life on campus. They have been the most incredible resources to me in this work this year and to so many members of our team. And I would say that the guardrails, that's what they are every single day. And so we have to make sure that like they, I think, continue to get the support that they need, but also that people coming into this role are aware that advisors are meant to be leaned on. Student self-governance doesn't mean that we isolate ourselves into a bubble and only talk to other students. It means that we participate in the governance system by leaning on all the resources available. Think that includes incredible advisors like Brian and Aaron, and so are so grateful to have worked with them, but also stakeholders like you all. And so I'm grateful that on our campus, our student body president gets to serve in this space and gets to interface with you in the way that I have. And so the last thing that I want to say is that it has been incredible being in this position. It's been the honor of my life to get to work with all of you and to have been a part of all of these initiatives and the ones we just don't have time to talk about today. But I decided last night that one of the last things that I really wanted to communicate is that Carolina is a hard school to attend and it's an expensive school to attend. And I have been here for four years and have been the leader of our campus, one of them, for the last year for free. It's a hundred thousand dollar education. And my mom, who even though she doesn't have to pay for my education, still has had to work three jobs to take care of myself and all of my siblings and like worked so hard. I think I've talked to you a little bit, some of you, about just my mom's journey with breast cancer last year and how I found out she was diagnosed in the middle of my campaign and it was just so difficult. I'm grateful to be here and to be getting a degree from here in two months. And I just could not leave this space without thanking all of you, but also thanking Carolina for the experience that I've had. So thank you all so much. Guys, I almost made it out without crying, geez.
Well, Madam President, if you would remain pleased because it wouldn't be a Board of Trustees meeting without the chair walking on a resolution. So I'm walking on the following resolution. In appreciation of Talaja M. Van. Whereas Talaja Teddy M. Van has served as a valuable and appreciated member of the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill Board of Trustees in her capacity as the UNC Chapel Hill Student Body President during the 2022-23 academic year. And whereas Ms. Van diligently illustrated her deep commitment to representing the student body by sharing candid, student-centered feedback and the needs in her work with the board. And whereas Ms. Van unfailingly and with passionate commitment empowered the UNC student body to play an active role in helping to make the Carolina campus more welcoming for everybody. And whereas Ms. Van was a valued voice in board discussions as a member of the External Relations Committee and the University Affairs Committee. And whereas Ms. Van provided additional support for the university as a member of the Council of Student Body Presidents for the UNC system. And whereas Ms. Van has demonstrated leadership and dedication to the university and community through her work with the Black Student Movement, UNC's NAACP chapter, Ebony Reader's Onyx Theater and her nonprofit Bright Brain Tutoring, among others. And whereas Ms. Van during her term as student body president was instrumental in the establishment, unveiling and program for the James L. Cates Junior Memorial on campus, which I was honored to attend that ceremony with you. And whereas Ms. Van provided invaluable guidance, insight and leadership in working with students, faculty, staff, administrators and her fellow trustees on a number of timely issues, including expanding graduate student representation and shared governance, increasing awareness and elevating the work of accessibility advocates, helping to support student advocacy for reproductive rights and increased funding for student organizations. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill thanks and congratulates Talaja Teddy Van for her dedication to the university, her hard work and outstanding service in student government and as a trustee and wishes her every success in her future pursuits as a proud Carolina alumnus.
We will adopt that by acclamation. Now, also as a tradition, and you will receive a framed, really nice copy of that resolution also. Mr. McClure and the team has assured me of that, and that's tradition, but also in the tradition of former trustees.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you for all you've done.
Lastly, I just want to take a moment to introduce to you all your new student body president, Christopher Everett. Christopher Everett is here today and will serve as a 2023 student body president. At UNC, Chris is a public policy major with a minor in media and journalism, and he is a Harvey Beach scholar. He's a member of Honors Carolina, gang, gang, and has previously been heavily involved with UNC's club gymnastics team. His campaign was called Carolina for Everyone, and he set out with a goal to bring all students to the table, especially those who felt unseen, unheard and undervalued at our university. Outside of his academics, Chris interns at Brady United, a gun violence prevention nonprofit located in Washington DC. He was also recent, he also recently served as an Ava Clayton Fellow with the North Carolina Democratic Party at Share Our Strength, a nonprofit focused on childhood hunger and poverty, and with North Carolina Governor Roy Cooper in his press office. Chris recently served as Deputy Chief of Staff for the Van Administration and has worked for all of his time at Carolina in the Black Student Movement and other cultural organizations to be able to take action on issues of advocacy for different students. So I'm more than happy to introduce Chris and I think he's going to be with you all in your next meeting. We'll get a chance to introduce himself a little bit more. I just wanted to take a moment to invite him into the space and to let him know that I'm so excited for all the work that he's going to do moving forward.
With that being said, before I call on the chancellor, it's okay. And I was going to ask Theodore if you were going to come up and speak because you weren't on the, on my printed agenda. That's why I was kind of turning to you pursuant to student body president trustee Van's advocacy for the graduate student professionals. Look forward to hearing from you. Thank you, Theodore.
Thank you. I hope, let's see if I'm not on the agenda here, so hoping the slides are. Okay, so I wanted to start by saying that especially after that presentation by Teddy and Victoria, my digital media guy was on spring break last week. Mine is going to look much simpler, but they're a hard act to follow either way, so I'll do my best. So thank you for the invitation to speak before you. And I want to also acknowledge the last time that I was here, I was asking for money and you guys came through with some remarkable leadership that was quick and effective. So I'm bringing you thanks on behalf of the entire graduate professional student body for the leadership that you and our chancellor, our provost, Nate and his team, Dean of the Graduate School. I mean, we had so many partners and without you. Um, Dean of the Graduate School. I mean, we had so many partners and, and without you um, we couldn't have done it. So thank you for, for your leadership on that issue. I am not here to ask for money today. You can uh, rest easy that I'm, I'm here to share some information uh, and try to strike a balance between um. Uh, providing new information and maybe highlighting some challenges or opportunities to consider uh, next year. Uh, before I do that, I want to introduce you uh, to Lauren Hawkinson, who's incoming president. Uh, Lauren's teaching right now as, as so many graduate students do, so she can't be with us, but um, have full confidence that she will do a great job. And I look forward to observing her in this space. I will probably not be wearing a suit the next time you see me, but uh, she I'm sure will be dressed up and uh, she's going to do a great job. So the first thing I wanted to highlight is um, I wanted to try to quantify some return on investment from graduate professional education. I find numbers very helpful, even though I'm uh, teaching a Shakespeare class right now. I, I still like numbers. Um, and I just wanted to highlight what a great investment the graduate and professional education is for, for this state. So we have about eleven thousand students currently enrolled. Uh, and their yearly spending, this is from a study that was commissioned by Suzanne Barbour, the previous dean of the graduate school, conducted by faculty here at, here at the university. The spending of the graduate professional student population just at Chapel Hill um, produces about two hundred and ten million in uh, uh. Economic activity for the state and fifty-six million in uh, state or local tax revenue. In state, we have uh, according to our records, fifty-six thousand alumni and their economic impact is two point seven billion. Uh, and they're producing a hundred fifty-seven million in sub-federal uh, tax revenue. The reason that I wanted to highlight that is uh, the way the model works, we typically assume that people who are spending in the twenty to thirty, with an income of twenty to thirty thousand. Their money goes straight into the state economy at basically one-to-one rate. They're not saving much. Um, so the investment that you all made in graduate professional students is going to circulate straight back into the economy of North Carolina during their time here. Uh, and so I think it's a very good use of state tax dollars. That's something we'll be highlighting next week. Um, when I and several other grad students are attending a dinner with members of the NC General Assembly um, to talk some about why it's worth investing in our program. So those are the, the two quick takeaways. And then workforce need I know is a, is a major emphasis. Uh, and it's one of the challenges and opportunities I'll address at the, at the end. There are a few opportunities on the economic study side. Um, I, I think we, we can talk some about the spending value of graduate professional students. We don't have a great way yet of quantifying the, the value of the research and teaching done. I, I think uh, when I checked with, with Jim from Cause of Arts and Sciences, we think about fifteen percent of the credit hours are taught in some way by graduate professional students, which I think is a. A good rate for a leading research institution, but it would be great if we could put a number on the value of the research work that is done and. Try to put a number on the value of the teaching. I think that might be helpful for us to present to you next year. So I hope we can do that. And the big opportunities I wanted to highlight are that we have a huge opportunity to increase in-state retention of these students after they graduate. Um, and that that itself, I think, Mike and I have talked about this previously, could help us to grow the, the donor pool among the graduate professional uh, alumni base. Um, so those are two opportunities that I'm excited about and I know Lauren is excited about as well. Uh, I wanted to give you a quick look. And uh, here, you know, I was sitting out there while Teddy and Victoria are presenting, thinking, man, putting white font on a background was much smarter than two different shades. These are the, the two shades on the school website, but not the easiest to read, I know. Um, so wish I'd done the white, but I just wanted to draw your attention to these incredible numbers from our programs. Um, I reached out to the deans of every school uh, on, on the spring break timeline, I admit, and they were very kind and made time to reply to me. And I, I just think these numbers highlight what an incredible job this university does of producing, preparing um, graduate professional students to. Become qualified into the workforce and, and meet the needs of this state. Um, these are just, I, I think, self-evidently impressive numbers and uh, a, a sign of the good work that's done here. I also wanted to talk some about the, the students themselves. So I've, I've talked about the ROI. I wanted to talk in a qualitative fashion about. The work that these students have done, some of the programs that are exciting. Um, when we go to the legislature next week, one of the students coming with me is using ultrasound in order to look at the plaque buildup inside of arteries. So there are three hundred thousand North Carolinians every year who have an ischemic stroke. I think I'm saying that right. Uh, with his technique, we're going to be able to reduce unnecessary surgeries. We're going to be able to catch those strokes before they happen. That's a grad student researcher in the biomedical engineering program, which is joint program with NC State pioneering this technique. Really remarkable, going to help a lot of people. Um, we have a student who has studied how the PFAS buildup in human patients creates resistance to chemo treatments. Um, we have a student who's done an archaeological study on how Jewish communities from the second to the sixth century in the Middle East lived and worshipped. Uh, we have a student who is reviewing how toxins from algae bloom can enter humans through the air, which is a novel um, vector that we weren't aware of previously. Uh, and we have a student doing a logistical project, one that's near and dear to my heart, which is when you allocate money to food insecurity. The question is, okay, we, we've moved the money. How do we get the food to the people? Uh, and we have a student who's looking at if you're operating in a rural community versus an urban community, you need different strategies. So what are those best practices so that we're not just allocating money wastefully, but we're actually ensuring that that money translates to food on the table for people? So I, I wanted to highlight qualitatively a few of the different projects our students are doing and what graduate and professional study needs. Um, and, and so the last thing then that I wanted to talk about. Uh, are the challenges and opportunities that, that we're, we're facing. Um, I, I talked to a lot of students. I talked to the deans. Um, and these are a few of the things that came up uh, recurring. I'll sort of softball the first one because I've, I've, I've done that one before, so I don't want to sound like a broken record. Uh, but many people did mention that, of course, with more investment, they can do more. And this pathway to prosperity that graduate school provides is, I think, one of the strengths of this university, but it's one that you're well aware of. So I think the more interesting component for that one is we've identified workforce priority areas. And I think that with, with, between the provost, the chancellor and, and you all determining what those are and investing heavily in those promises. Um, as the economic return slide indicated, to pay for itself over the long run and to benefit the state workforce. Then there's a couple of interesting ones that may be less familiar, I think. Um, students and some of the deans mentioned again and again that affordable housing and access to transit come up a lot. When I say access to transit, what I really mean is everybody on campus wants their own parking space. And I was in a, I stepped out at three PM yesterday to be on the parking call. We have uh, fifty-three thousand people who need parking. We have twenty-three thousand spaces. Uh, I, I've, I've talked to Nate. Parking is very expensive to build, so we're not, it's not like we're going to build a lot more parking, but we do pay for the transit system a substantial amount. And so our ability to align housing and transit and to work with the town on those things can be a very strong recruitment incentive. One thing that drives students away. Oh, am I out of time? All right, uh, uh, one thing that drives students away sometimes from our university is that it's so expensive to live in Chapel Hill. I'm sure you've probably heard Mayor Pam talk about that and other advocates. Um, our ability to produce student-focused housing uh, or even workforce housing because of the, the way in which the Board of Governors recommends that we. Keep costs low for students is a huge asset uh, and something that comes up often. And concentrating that along transit lines can help us to tell people, well, we can't give you a parking space, but we do spend a lot of money on this bus service and it's very well-used. So that's an investment that we're trying to maximize and it's something that I think can benefit our students and help us recruit strong students. Um, even from schools like that one school down the road that pays their grad students forty thousand. But they may not have such good graduate student housing, so we can, we can compete in other uh, arenas with them. Um, deferred maintenance, you've heard about, especially the ADA compliance issues. That one comes up a lot. I know how enormous the need there is. I know you all are committed to steady spending, but I wanted to share with you that students know about that. They appreciate your commitment to that. Um, and, and they're fully on board with that spending. Um, and the final thing that deans mentioned is that several of our programs to meet workforce need are trying to grow enrollment. And in order to do so, they may need new program staff. So that was the other area of opportunity they had highlighted. Um, I had, I didn't want to put it in the presentation, but I have a slide for each school when, with, which the deans replied to highlighting. A few more of their success metrics and whatever opportunity they asked me to share with you all. If you want those, I've, I've, I've shared them with, with Chris, I know, um, and uh, and the chancellor has them as well, and so those are available, but um. I'll, I'll stop there to be brief. If anybody has questions, I'm happy to take them and otherwise it's really been a privilege to get to know you, to observe you in action, to work with you and um. I thank you for what you do for this university and our students.
Theodore, it really has been good to get to know you. I appreciate working with us and uh, I've enjoyed your perspective on things. And you've been free to give that to me, I know personally, so I want to thank you for that. I know Trustee Davis uh, sort of indicated he'd like to say something.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I have known a lot of uh, when you, when I was your G P uh, S F, now graduate and professional student government. Uh, presidents over time, and I can unequivocally say that you have been uh, the one who I think has achieved the most. By coming to us and bringing problems in a um, in a way that um, that you, you lay them out logically. And i- i- by doing that, you've been incredibly successful. Um, so I, I thank you for the way that you've approached us, how you brought problems and issues to us and worked collaboratively to help resolve those. So I think you've done a fantastic job, but thank you for your service.
Trustee Curtis.
I, I wanted to echo um, Trustee Davis's comments and, and commend uh, both Teddys. Elijah and Theodore on their approach. Um, uh, Trustee Van has had the benefit of being on the uh, board and, and able to speak. And I think her advocacy to include the graduate students uh, um, is important. But in the meantime, you've done it kind of behind the scenes and, and meetings and. Uh, I just wanted to commend you for your uh, approach and civil dialogue, both of you. Uh, because that sort of advocacy is very effective with this board. And um, and you've taken the, the approach that's very effective uh, for your constituency. So just wanted to recognize uh.
Thank you.
Yep, doesn't mean you always get everything you want, but I do, I do think that this board has really taken the approach of giving a lot of people opportunity to be heard. Not only individual board members, but constituencies. So um, at least that's been our goal. Thanks.
Great. Thank you.
So uh, before I call on the chancellor, while the room is still sort of full, I'm, I'm. Taking the risk of now um, upping my game on uh, walking on resolutions. So uh, I am taking the prerogative to walk on a second resolution this morning. And um, probably, I don't know, uh, putting this person maybe on the spot, but. This person has been very professional in front of this board and many, 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 many other boards previous. And has done such a good job. I don't think she'll mind. And if Anna Wu wouldn't mind coming up to the front of the room. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm walking on a resolution that says the following, whereas Anna Wu has served as a highly valued leader of the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill for twenty-eight years. And whereas Ms. Wu has overseen significant planning, design and construction projects for our campus. Including two campus master plans and the development of a ten-year, two-point-three-billion-dollar capital program. That has transformed our campus during the time in her facility services, and that would include the Curtis Media Center, which I mentioned earlier this morning. And whereas Ms. Wu's thoughtful and generous leadership of teams responsible for planning, design, maintenance and operations of campus. Was celebrated with the bestol of the CNOCS Massey Distinguished Service Award in two thousand and nine. One of the most prestigious distinctions here at Carolina. And whereas Ms. Wu's contribution to the world of architecture has been recognized at the state and national level with a fellowship from the American Institute of Architects in two thousand and nine. And the Frank B. Turner Award in two thousand and nineteen by the North Carolina Chapter of the American Institute of Architects. And whereas Ms. Wu was named the twenty twenty-two Carolina Chamber Town and Gown Award recipient. Which recognized her work to foster strong relationships between the local community and the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. And whereas Ms. Wu has provided invaluable guidance and leadership to the Board of Trustees Committee on Budget, Finance and Infrastructure during her leadership. In tenure in the Facility Services Division and now as, now therefore be it resolved. That the Board of Trustees of the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill thanks and congratulates Anna Wu. For her dedication and many contributions to the university, the state and beyond, and wishes her every happiness in her retirement. Adopted by acclamation. So I, I, I got together with uh, Vice Chancellor Knupman and, and his team, and I want to present you with um, a token from the Board of Trustees. Kind of a cool art print. I actually think it shows on the art print your, your current office window, so you'll.
Thank you very much. It, it's been an honor to work with this board and preceding board, so thank you.
All right, that's two. I don't know if I've got any others in the bag. We'll see. Mr. Chancellor.
Great. Good morning. Good morning and uh, thank you and Anna, uh, thank you for all that you have done and will continue to do for a great university. And uh, I consider you a great friend and colleague and uh, I know you're going to be smiling on your way into retirement, uh, but uh, don't forget to come by and visit every now and then. Uh, I want to also take uh, an opportunity to uh, to thank Chair Bolick for his earlier remarks. I want to thank uh, President Van uh, for a wonderful presentation and, and for the incredible service uh, to the university uh, as uh. A student body president and Board of Trustee member over the past year. Uh, Victoria, thank you for your presentation today and um, Theodore for your update as well. Graduate students are so important to our university and. Um, I appreciate your advocacy and I know I speak for many uh, who feel the same. Uh, each day, we are moving closer to our goal of becoming that leading global public research university. And um, it, it's because of our community and I talk often about that and that includes our world-class faculty, our incredible students, both graduate and undergraduate students and our amazing staff. Uh, I am beyond grateful for their hard work and dedication uh, to our mission of serving the people of North Carolina. And it was great yesterday to be uh, alongside our uh, Board of Trustees members and some of our General Assembly members. Uh, at the ribbon cutting ceremony uh, for the North Carolina Policy Collaboratory that Chair Bolick's already mentioned. And as I said yesterday about the collaboratory. It's continuing to, to do amazing work to utilize and disseminate the research expertise from across our, uh, our campus here, but also across the UNC system. And taking that important work uh, out into the state of North Carolina. That's what a, a, a leading public research university must do. Uh, from understanding the threats of toxins in our drinking water to guiding our state's response to COVID nineteen. Uh, the collaboratory is giving our researchers uh, the resources that they need to address these grand challenges. And I'm grateful to the work of Jeff Warren, who we also honored yesterday at that uh, ribbon cutting ceremony for his leadership. But our university's work is not just happening at the collaboratory. Every day across our campus, researchers are solving. Problems and addressing the grand challenges uh, of our time, and I want to briefly highlight three areas of that amazing work that's happening on our campus. That research sometimes i- isn't heard by the campus and uh, doesn't get enough attention. And so I wanted to um, show you how we are making a big difference in people's lives. First, and I've got some slides. Uh, Frank Liebvarth uh, and his team are addressing the challenging issues around recycling plastics. Some amazing facts here. Every day, the US manufacturers make enough plastics. To fill the Carolina Panther Stadium. Think about this, from the turf to the brim, end zone to end zone. And from the sidelines to the nosebleeds. That's how much plastics are being produced daily. By twenty fifty, scientists predict there will be more plastic in the ocean than fish. And we only recycle about eight-point-seven percent of it. But Dr. Liebvarth and his team are focusing on the polymers that make up plastic, changing their chemistry to make them more valuable. We are working to solve this problem at UNC with creativity and the interdisciplinary collaboration that we are most famous for. Culture of collaboration and solving grand challenges. Second, launched in twenty twenty-two, our team at the Gefeller Center. Started a new initiative to make treatment for traumatic brain injuries more accessible for military veterans in and around North Carolina. A lot of the work that we started there years ago, and I was part of that, was around sport-related traumatic brain injury. But we have another focus now alongside the important work in, in sport-related concussion. It's a community-based clinical outreach program to provide care to veterans who are experiencing the effects of traumatic brain injuries. Or post-traumatic stress resulting from a career serving our nation. Under Dr. Jason Mahalix's leadership, Thrive is now fully operational in its off-campus location. And we celebrated the opening last month and I appreciated uh, Trustee Davis for attending that uh, grand opening ceremony. Even in, even in its infancy, Thrive is making a difference. Matthew Cullen pictured here doing a quine therapy. Matthew Cullen pictured here doing a quine therapy. Was the first ever patient evaluated in the program, retired from the military in 2014 after 12 years of military service. And he described the work that's happening at Thrive as this. It felt like we are going to tackle this together. We won't just send you to a bunch of appointments and hope that it works. It is this dedicated holistic, all encompassing research that is making a difference in the lives of veterans in our state. And third, one of our state's and nation's greatest public health challenges is the opioid crisis. More than 4,000 North Carolinians lost their lives to overdose in 2021, the highest number in the history of our state. The pandemic has only exacerbated this crisis with deaths jumping by more than 70% since 2019. In addition, each year, this crisis costs our country over $140 billion in medical costs, criminal justice costs and loss of productivity. This crisis will require resources and expertise from across disciplines. It's a challenge for health officials, government leaders, social workers and more. And our School of Government through NC Impact directed support to 10 North Carolina communities working to enact an integrated and innovative responses. To their local opioid crises. Our Keenan Flagler Business Schools Center for the Business of Health and Acadia Healthcare. Announced a two year project to review the opioid epidemic's deep impact. Address untested or under researched treatment and prevention approaches and develop best practices. And recommendations tailored to individual communities. Researchers from our Gilling School of Global Public Health and the UNC Injury Prevention Research Center. Working with seven community based harm reduction programs from all regions of North Carolina to conduct the first ever street drug assessment program focused on public health. Backed by sophisticated machine learning techniques. They are developing systems to detect and issue public warnings about dangerous adulterants in street drugs. UNC's Injury Prevention Research Center is also engaging with federal, state and community partners to develop solutions. To mitigate and prevent long term opioid use and overdose, including supporting the state of North Carolina's opioid action plan. Brian Roth and his colleagues at the School of Medicine and at Eschleman are creating new kinds of drugs for various conditions such as pain, depression, severe anxiety. Without the harmful effects of addiction. All of this research is having an impact. And that that and that it thanks it's thanks to incredible teams led by our world class faculty here at Carolina. Our researchers are solving the grand challenges of our time and looking forward to the challenges of the future. The breakthroughs and solutions that will come from their work will save lives and make the world a better place. I'm going to thank the board for supporting our world class faculty and researchers. And our dean to go out to hire the best and retain the best faculty so that we can continue to do this amazing work. Now, switching gears. It's my pleasure to introduce our faculty speaker for today. I'm out on campus often, as you know, talking with students, and one of my favorite questions is, tell me about a favorite class or a favorite professor. I did it just yesterday as we were meeting with students over at the collaboratory dedication. And hands down, the answer that I get most frequently. Is this individual that I'm going to bring to the podium here in a second. This is Professor Matt Andrews. While it's not been quite the March Madness that we had hoped for. It feels only fitting that we can still talk a little basketball today. And so with us today is Dr. Matt Andrews, Teaching Associate Professor and Undergraduate Advisor in the Department of History here at Carolina. And he's going to talk with us a bit about one of those favorite classes and themes that he is passionate about and an expert in, and that is. The history of basketball in North Carolina. So please welcome Matt Andrews, one of Carolina's most beloved professors.
Thank you, Chancellor Guskowitz, for inviting me here this morning, and thank you for that wonderful introduction. I'm pleased to be here with members of the board. No way am I going to turn down an opportunity to talk about basketball and American history, two of my my passions in in life. Yeah, it's too bad that neither of the teams are still in the tournament, but my my hope today is that this talk is going to be much more thrilling than any run to the final four. I do not think so. And I also want to say it was a great pleasure to finally see Teddy Van in 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 action. There. Have you ever taken one of my I teach these big courses, so I often don't get to know my my students. Well, first of all, shame on you for not taking any of my courses. And I have met many of your friends and sorority sisters, I I believe, and they just glow when they when when they talk about you. So. I just want to say thank you for all of you've done this year and for your role in getting the Jane Kate's. Memorial and and the role of this of this board doing that 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 also. I I'm a little sheepish coming on after hearing people who are healing the ocean and talking about brain injuries and the opioid crisis. But I I do like to think that I do important work here, which is introducing students. To ideas about race and gender and American and North Carolina history. I think I do a decent job of letting students know how far we have come. And about the challenges that we that we still still face. That's why I am interested in history to to illuminate those two 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 themes. So what I want to do today, I thought it'd be fun to talk about basketball in North Carolina, obviously. I get my my slide up there. Yeah, there we go. But really, what I I'm doing today is giving you a sense of what I do in my history course, History 585, which is called Race Basketball and the American Dream. It's one of a handful of courses that I teach. That that use sports to learn about the the American past. And as I'm staring at my notes here, Teddy, I'm just going to keep piling on. I was so struck by how you can get up here and talk so eloquently without notes. I've been doing this 25 years and I don't go anywhere without my my notes. So. That's a great, great and enviable skill. Race and basketball is a course that uses my interest in basketball. And really, I I try to use my students' interest in basketball to explore meaningful stories about, again, race and class and gender and regional. Identity among many other things. And I am proud to say, and I want to emphasize this, that I feel like that that open debate and civil discourse happens in my classroom. Every day, we had an amazing discussion on Tuesday. I was discussing the tragic death of of Len Bias. And we were talking about the effect of that on the nation's drug policies and incarceration rates. And and students were just going back and forth about this and asking questions and hearing different per perspectives on this. So though I talk about basketball, these are the types of of weightier issues that I'm interested in in exploring in my course. What I thought I would do this morning, though, is explore. My course is not really about basketball in North Carolina specifically. It's about basketball in the United States, much more generally. But I thought I would do this morning is explore bits of the rich history of basketball in this state. A history that we might say began in 1905 with with this game here. When the Wake Forest College Battling Baptists took on the Trinity Methodists at at Trinity College, a school now known as Duke. And I think the nicknames of these two teams right away give us a sense of the overwhelming significance of religion in 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 North Carolina, North Carolina life, certainly. In the early 20th century, that's where they played the game. They they played the game on that small court in the Angier Gym, the structure that is still on the Duke's campus there. It's known as the Ark. And trust me on this one, if you ever find yourself on Duke's older east campus, spend a few moments to track down that that building and 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 walk inside. This is what the inside looks like. It's like going into the past. It reminds me of the gym that James Naismith invented basketball in Springfield, Massachusetts in 1891. It's small, it's cramped, it has a running track there on the second story where one could reach down and hang a basket. This game in 1905 that I'm mentioning is the first intercollegiate basketball game below the Mason Dixon line. It's the first intercollegiate basketball game in the South. But here's how I thought I would proceed today. If you're a sports fan, I hope some of you are. I know the sports fans like lists, so I'm going to give you a list. To today, I'm going to as a way of exploring the rich story of basketball in North Carolina, I thought I'd give you my list of the top five teams. In North Carolina basketball history, we'll call this my Tar Heel State Top Five. And if you're a big basketball fan, and it sounds like some of you are, or at least your your son is a big, big basketball fan. You might think that I'm going to focus on teams like this. Like the 1974 NC State Wolf Pack, a team with the transcendent David Thompson and a team. That ended UCLA streak of seven straight NCAA titles. I'm a UCLA alum. I was only six years old at the time, but that one still hurts a little bit. Or you might think I'm going to tell you about the 1982 Tar Heels led by James Worthy and and Sam Perkins coached by Dean Smith. They had a pretty good freshman on that team as well. They beat a great Georgetown team for the title that year. That that 82 Tar Heels team was one heck of a basketball team. Or you might think I'm going to talk about that other school, the Duke teams that won back to back national championships, 91 and 92 with Christian Laettner and the transcendent. Grant Hill. These are all incredible teams for sure, but these are not really historically significant teams. As someone who uses basketball to get at American history. I'm more interested in the teams that can reveal something that I consider to be meaningful about this state's past, something much more than just sports. So here comes my top five list with some unexpected teams on it. You'll 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 know some of these teams. I think some of these you perhaps have have never heard of. It's a list that can teach us some important things. I think about race and gender and regional identity and basketball fervor and fandom. And as we are going to see, we're going to learn something about. Pantyhose today also. You'll see what I mean. All right, you will. Let's work our way backward. Number five on my list is the 1954 NC State Wolf Pack. We began at NC State. Because that's where big time basketball in this state actually be begins. You know, up until World War II, football was was king. At most North Carolina colleges, here are UNC and Duke playing in 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 Kenan Stadium in 1948, back before the stadium was enclosed. I realize you have to have seats. You have to raise revenue, but look how pretty football games. Used to be back in back in 1948. UNC and Duke had very successful football programs. And North Carolina State wanted to compete with UNC and Duke in in sports. They had a football team, but when officials at NC State saw how expensive it would be to build a big time football program, which meant a a big football stadium. They were discouraged by the price. So the plan, very consciously at NC State, began to beat their became to beat their rivals in in basketball. The decision was made to become a basketball school. Basketball is cheaper than than football. Basketball they could afford. So they built Reynolds Coliseum, a 12,000 seat arena that was North Carolina's biggest arena until the Dean Dome opened in 1986. There are a lot of legendary games in there. I'm going to put one of these photographs up there. I love the pictures of the early games at at Reynolds. Here's one from the Dixie Classic in in 1957. The photos are atmospheric, and that's because of all the cigarette smoke that's in the arena at that time. Reynolds Coliseum was named after the RJ Reynolds Company. Smoking was not prohibited in that arena. It was encouraged. So an atmospheric nicotine haze with no advertisements in the background. Sports photographs used to be much cooler than than they are today. So NC State had this arena. What they needed was a top notch coach. So they turned to the basketball crazy state of Indiana. And they lured one of the most successful high school coaches in that state's history to Raleigh. His name is Everett Case. And Everett Case is the one who not only builds up the NC State program. But I would argue he's the one that puts basketball on the map at the state of North Carolina. It should have been a guy named John McClendon, who I'm going to talk about in just a second, but it was Everett Case. For his early NC State teams, Everett Case recruited players from his home turf in Indiana. Those are the players that he knew. His early teams were known as the Hoosier Hotshots. But this would change because Everett Case took it upon himself to promote and sell the sport of basketball in this state. Everett Case said that he had a dream, a dream of a day when every young boy in the state was playing basketball, had a basketball hoop. In his in his driveway, and so he could stock his North Carolina State teams with nothing but local talent. So he traveled the backroads of the state in the offseason. He spoke to civic groups about the values of basketball. He handed out basketballs and iron rims, and he extolled the virtues of the sport. So I think of Everett Case as the. As the Johnny Appleseed of basketball in this state. He spreads the gospel of basketball throughout North Carolina. And I had to pick one of his teams. I picked Case's 1954 team for my list because this was the first group of Hoosier Hotshots. Who won the very first ACC basketball tournament. The ACC tournament was also Everett Case's idea. In Indiana, they had a storied high school basketball tournament. And Case wanted to bring the fervor of that tournament to this state. And maybe you know this, but what made the early ACC tournament so special is that only the winner of the tournament got to go to the NCAA tournament. No matter what had happened during the regular season, so it all came down to these fours, these four days in Raleigh, and it's the all or nothing. Tournament. I think it's one of the things that helps fuel the basketball craze in this state. As did the number four team on our list, the 1957 UNC Tar Heels. This is a story that I want to go into a little bit of depth on. You know, in the 1950s, UNC was looking for a coach who would compete and who could compete with with Everett Case. And they found their man. People know this, I'm guessing, and this slick talking fancy dressing new New Yorker named Frank McGuire. And Frank McGuire had been coaching at St. John's in New York City. But then there was a gambling scandal in New York City. There was a point shaving scandal, and it decimated the popularity of college basketball in New York City. UNC then was able to woo Frank McGuire down south to to Chapel Hill, where he had actually been during the war a little bit. And like Everett Case stocked his early teams with players from Indiana, Frank McGuire stocked his teams with players that he knew. He stocked his early teams with people from New York City. Here's a cartoon from Sports Illustrated in 1957. They called Frank McGuire's New York City to UNC Pipeline. The Underground Railroad, an Underground Railroad in reverse, right? Instead of African Americans escape escaping enslavement and going to the north. Here it was white basketball players leaving New York City and heading down south, right to the bottom of the steps of the South Building, as we see in that illustration there. In 1957, UNC had a starting five or all five players were from the New York area. And this New York talent led UNC to the NCAA title. This team, and we were discussing this more and more when Lenny Rosenbluth died last summer. The 1957 team is is legendary around here. They were undefeated, 32 and 0. But they were not dominant. They played four very exciting overtime games that year, including in the Final Four. This is remarkable. Back to back triple overtime games. They beat Michigan State in the semifinals. And then they defeated the team that no one thought could be defeated. They defeated the University of Kansas with their all everything center, Wilt Wilt Chamberlain. And this is a moment that I've done personally a lot of research into. After the win over Kansas, UNC students who were listening to the game on the radio or some were watching the game on on television, which was a new phenomenon. Watching college basketball in North Carolina in 1957, they stormed out of their dormitories and 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 local bars. Students did a massive conga line and danced up and down Franklin Street. That's a little less familiar to what happens today. Here they are with a bonfire right there in the middle of of Franklin Street. That sounds more familiar. But you know, when I saw this photograph, I was really struck by 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 something in here. And so here's something I want to emphasize about this 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 moment. It gives gives you a sense of the types of issues that I. Explore in my course. This takes us to the politics of race in the state at this time. UNC's 1957 national title came, it was a landmark for the state of North Carolina. In 1957, the attention of the nation was turning to the South and turning to the question of 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 civil rights. Much of the nation was disparaging and condemning the South for the slow pace of of integration, especially after the Supreme Court in 1954. It said it's time to de desegregate schools. No doubt about it, the white South was being chastised. It was under attack. And now here was this victory. UNC was the first school from a former Confederate state to win a collegiate national championship in basketball. This was a win that many white North Carolinians and many white southerners were very proud of because it had something to do with 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 southern pride. And I think it had something to do with with race. At that bonfire there, there's a flag. It's not a UNC banner that's being waved. It's not the flag of North Carolina. It's the Confederate flag. It it's a statement of white southern pride. And I'm going to build on this by going to the to the airport. 10,000 North Carolinians went to RDU to the Raleigh Durham Airport to welcome the Tar Heels home after their their Final Four victory. Twice, the plane had to abort landings because people got so excited, they ran onto the tarmac to, and that's not a good idea. So the plane flew back up and finally, the third time was was the charm and the the conquering heroes departed. Here's the crowd and here are some of the signs welcoming the team home. And I think these are instructive. There's that great sign about UNC. welcoming the team home. And I think these are instructive. There's that great sign about UNC wilting the stilt. That's Wilt Chamberlain. But the UNC players here are being celebrated as Rebel Yanks. They are being praised very explicitly for winning one for Dixie. Once again, not North Carolina, not UNC, but Dixie, the white South. Yet, I'm convinced of this, at least partly, the rise of the basketball in this state is wrapped up in the emotions of white Southern pride. It's one of the impetuses of the basketball craze in the state. I think these signs are evidence of that. And I'm happy to say more about this later in our discussion, if we're going to have any. But I also want to say this right now, it's because of what I'm talking about at this moment that I actually think this moment is even more meaningful than people give it credit for. This is what is going to make Charles Scott so important. The University of North Carolina basketball team is a representation of this state. And so when Charles Scott, with the obvious help of Dean Smith, desegregates the varsity program in 1967, he and Dean Smith are going to play a critical role in changing ideas about citizenship and belonging in this state as well. So, all right. So I just brought race into the conversation. Let's continue with that theme. Here's maybe a team you know less about. The number three team on my list is the 1937 Bennett College Bells. And this team was a powerhouse. Bennett College in Greensboro is a women's college that was founded to train African-American women to be active participants in the fight for racial justice. And at first, basketball, like this, basketball was seen as an asset in this project. Bennett administrators, they encouraged basketball playing as a means for health, as a means for well-being, though they didn't use that term back then for their students, and they promoted basketball as an expression of racial dignity and racial pride. The team at Bennett, they were known as the Bennett Bells, as in southern bells, right? There's an argument being made here. The idea being that these basketball players, they are feminine, and they are respectable. In the 1930s, the Bennett Bells were the top women's basketball program in the entire country. That was the best women's team in the entire nation. The Bells played all comers. They played high school teams, boys and girls high school teams. They played college teams. I shouldn't say all comers. Basketball was racially segregated at this time, so only black teams. College teams, barnstorming, women's teams, barnstorming teams were pro teams that would tour around, and they would play games as they traveled from city to city. Their top year, the year that I'm highlighting here, was 1937. The Bennett Bells were nationally famous. They had an undefeated season that year. And the Chicago Defender, which was the nation's most widely-read African-American newspaper, they declared the Bennett Bells "the nation's best female cage team." And if you didn't know this, early basketball players were often called cagers. Early basketball games often took place in wire cages. The ball never went out of bounds. That term has stuck around. Every once in a while, a reporter still refers to basketball players as cagers. But something interesting is about to happen here that I think is meaningful. In 1937, the Bennett Bells were the nation's best, but the end for the Bennett Bells was just around the corner, and the end came because this team was too good. There was a rising chorus of voices in the African-American community and in the Bennett administration that was beginning to argue that one of the keys to civil rights gains in this era were conventional and sharply-defined gender roles. That was critical. Black men had to be gentlemen at all times, and black women had to be ladies at all times. And running and sweating and displaying grit and passion on the basketball court was not considered ladylike by some. And so these players were involved in this no-win calculus. The more successful they were, the more unladylike people consider them to be, success in sports being considered a masculine virtue at this time. And so in 1942, the administration at Bennett College, they made the decision to get rid of the women's basketball program. They cut the basketball program. They got rid of basketball in the name of racial progress. That was the thought process. The Bennett players protested. One of them, Ruth Glover, said in an interview, "We were ladies. We just played basketball like boys." But that was the problem. For the Bennett administrators, the Bennett Bells needed to be ladies at all times, and as they saw it, basketball got in the way of this very important project. I think this is a revealing moment about attitudes about race and class and gender in the 1940s. That's how I talk about it in my class. Let's keep going. Number two on our list of greatest North Carolina basketball teams also comes from the state black colleges. It is a special team with a special coach, John McLendon, and the 1944 team at the North Carolina College for Negroes, the school now known as NC Central. John McLendon is one of the great, I really want to emphasize this, great but forgotten figures in the history of basketball. Remember last year during the Final Four, when Roy Cooper issued that proclamation declaring North Carolina the center of the basketball universe? And he listed all of the great teams and all of the great coaches and all of the great players. He left out John McLendon, which is why every political administration needs a basketball historian on the payroll, in my opinion. John McLendon learned the game of basketball from a guy named James Naismith. James Naismith was a phys ed instructor at the University of Kansas, which is where John McLendon learned how to coach basketball. Then in the 1940s, John McLendon, under Naismith's recommendation, got a job teaching basketball, coaching basketball at NCCN. And John McLendon is one of the game's great strategists, always tinkering. For example, he was trying to figure out how his team, which seemed to lack height, at least he said it did, how they could compensate for the fact that they lacked height, which put them at a defensive disadvantage. And so John McLendon hit on the idea that if you can't defend against your opponents at a high rate, then you should try to outscore them at a high rate. Try to outscore them with swift movement down the court every time, every time you gain possession, even after your opponent made a basket. John McLendon did not invent what is known as the fast, we call the fast break. Back then, it was just called racehorse basketball. But John McLendon is the one who introduced furious speed into the game of basketball. McLendon is the one who popularized the fast break and first ran it to devastating effect. And then he did something else. McLendon had another innovation. When other coaches that he played against began matching him fast break for fast break, he devised a slowdown or a stall offense. This was possible in an era before a shot clock. McLendon's strategy was to get the lead and then spread the court and pass the ball from corner to corner. He didn't have a good name for it. A young coach at UNC named Dean Smith would watch what McLendon was doing, and he copied this strategy. And he admitted where he got it from. Dean Smith called it his four corners offense. He was famous for it. I think there was a sports bar on Franklin Street that is named after it, but Dean Smith learned the four corners from John McLendon. So McLendon is one of the game's great innovators, and he also played a role in breaching Jim Crow in the South. It's a moment that's known as the secret game. This is a fascinating and revealing moment. In 1944, the two best basketball teams in this region were McLendon's team at NCCN and a team that was made up of white medical students over at Duke. During the war, Duke hosted medical students and trained them to be doctors, just like UNC was a Navy flight school and trained people to be pilots. Some of these doctors, medical students, were also very good basketball players. They had played when they were undergraduates, and they had a team, and they had proven that they were actually better than the Duke varsity basketball team. They had played against each other, and the medical students were the much better team. By chance, members of this team right here, and some of these white medical students from Duke, they met one afternoon at a secret interracial prayer meeting. Interracial prayer meetings were against the law in 1944 because of Jim Crow's segregation. So there was illegal prayer, I can say that. And there was also some friendly trash talking going on between the basketball players from these two teams, black and white players each claiming that their team was the best. Well, the beauty of sports is there's one way to settle this, right? Let's take it to the court, which is what they did. And so a game, but an illegal game, the secret game, was played on Sunday morning, March 12, 1944, Sunday morning, because all of Durham was at church, and no one would notice when 12 white basketball players drove to the black side of town and then got out of their cars and ran into a gym, where John McLendon ushered them in, locked the doors. He had covered the windows. No one was allowed to actually see this game. Who was better? NCCN was. In fact, they were twice as good. Using their innovative fast break, they doubled up the Duke medical students. The final score was 88 to 44. And then they played a second game where they mixed up the squads, and they played shirts and skins, which I think is a wonderful metaphor for desegregation in this state. It's a radical moment, but it all happened away from the public eye. No one really even knew this story until Charles Ellsworth wrote a New York Times piece about it and then published a great book about it called The Secret Game. But I think it's a perfect metaphor for John McLendon's amazing career. So many of his wins, so many of his accomplishments occurred out of the public eye, and that's because he was an African-American coach in the Jim Crow South. But we need to acknowledge his contributions as the guy who popularized the fast break. Every coach, from Dean Smith to Hubert Davis to Coach K to LaVell Moten at NC Central now, they all have some of John McLendon's coaching DNA in them. So a great coach with a great team, but the greatest team in the history of North Carolina basketball, says this guy right here, is the 1951 Haynes Hosery Hosers. The 1950s was a different era when it came to women's sports. Colleges and universities across the nation rarely offered athletic opportunities to their female students. I just told you how Bennett was actually getting rid of athletic opportunities. These opportunities really are not going to come back until the mid-1970s, and that's because of Title IX, which comes from in 1972. So if you were a female basketball player back then, your best opportunity to play team sports was representing a company in what were known as industrial leagues. Companies recruited female athletes. They hired them as secretaries, but their real job was to play basketball, was to represent the company and play winning basketball. This way, they were technically amateurs. They played in the Amateur Athletic Union, the AAU. They put them in these flashy satin uniforms, these remarkable uniforms with the company name on them. Then they sent them out to compete. This was marketing. This was advertising. And these industrial teams were the pinnacle of women's team sports in the 1940s and the 1950s. And the best of the bunch was the team that represented the Haynes Hosery Company in Winston-Salem, a company that made pantyhose. Haynes Hosery played in something called the Southern Textile League in the 1940s and the 1950s. Haynes Hosery was led by the two Es, Eunice Futch and Eckie Jordan. Futch was the nation's top center. Jordan was a dazzling ball handler. I'll let you try to figure out which one was the center and which one was the ball handler. Led by the two Es, Haynes Hosery had a remarkable 102-game winning streak, winning streak that stretched over four seasons. They won the AAU national championship in three consecutive years, '51, '52, and '53. And that 1951 team pictured there, the one I'm selecting as the top for my list, they were the first North Carolina team to win a national championship of any kind in any sport. There's one last thing to say here. There was a revealing and troubling side story, I would argue, at these AAU basketball tournaments. At these tournaments, these tournaments that showcase the athleticism and the grit and the skill of these great female players, the last evening of these AAU national tournaments were always devoted to a players' beauty contest, in which the players were judged on the same physical merits of Miss America candidates. Every player on every team was paraded before judges, and those judged most lovely, and I can't see it all here, but that's all right, I'll paint you a picture. Those judged most lovely were given fake diamond tiaras, long velvet cloaks, and a victory bouquet to wear with their basketball uniforms and their kneepads. And so on the last day, the AAU team organizers, they announced two all-tournament teams. There was the team that was picked for its basketball skill and the team that was picked for its beauty. So the AAU, they're a complex organization. They're an organization that clearly confounds gender stereotypes in this era. No, women can play basketball. They can play sports, but I think with moments like this, they reinforced the gender stereotypes of the era. But let's give it up for Haynes Hosery. I tell my students in my basketball history course that any list of the greatest teams in North Carolina history must include the Haynes Hosery teams from the 1950s. I am now putting my money where my mouth is. I'm putting them number one on my list here. And I think I'll end there, and I'll, do we do questions and discussion, or?
Yeah. Dr. Andrews, thanks for your presentation. Very, very interesting, and I found it fascinating. Joe Quigg is my neighbor in Fayetteville, and so I think he would appreciate being on the list. And my son, who is a senior, has taken two of your classes.
Oh, is that right? Good.
He has. And just lest you know, he did retain and told me that he was very supportive of your position on Barry Bonds.
I teach at baseball.
Did be in the Hall of Fame. He also was very, very emphatic about the takeaways he got on the integration of baseball and what you call baseball's greatest experiment.
Yep.
He also was completely fascinated, of all things, with Jack Johnson and Jim Jeffries from the early 1900s, boxing, and the intersection of Olympics and global politics. So you do have students that retain stuff.
It sounds like he's paying attention. Yeah, very good.
If that makes you feel any better. Does anybody else have, trustee Otis Neal?
This is fascinating. I'm a Greensboro native. I know many Bennett Bells, but from the post-change time, where a Bennett Bell was to have been a woman who always wore gloves. She had a purse in the crook of her arm, and she had on high heels. And so I'm fascinated to know where that came from, because they definitely did a flip, and now I know the reason why. But thank you for such a fascinating.
No, you're welcome. Right, all has ideas about respectability in the African-American community in the 20th century and how those ideas change.
Had no idea. And as a result, they were always somewhat, that created angst among the women at North Carolina A&amp;T as being, you know, the snooty women, because they hadn't thought the same way. But now I understand why there was such a big push for that.
And to make this a little more of a Greensboro story, the moment that I seem to have really exacerbated the administration there, they played a game against the boys at Grimsley High School. And it was the thought of them being on the court with 17 and 18-year-old boys that the administration said enough is enough. It's time to change our policy. Yeah.
Yeah.
Trustee Codis? Yeah. You know, you always try and want to learn from this, from history. And it's interesting now, when you look at women's sports, for instance, and we talk about the big-money sports and where money is going. And so you've got maybe, you know, looking at your teams, you've got athletic ability of the various teams and how they're, how they would compete on the court. But then also, you know, how do you attract fans and financial support? You know, I don't think, I don't think the lesson learned of pageantry is probably a good lesson. But, you know, have you thought about how this could be, lessons from the past can be applied to the current issue, which is getting more fans in the seats for our women's sports?
Yeah, that's a great question. I have two very quick thoughts. Unfortunately, this sort of pageantry emphasis still exists. There are actually, because of NIL now, there are quite a few female athletes who are doing very, very well from themselves. Olivia Dunn, who's a gymnast at LSU, is making over $1 million in NIL money this year. The reason is because of the photographs that she puts on Instagram, which I assure you are not photographs of an athletic female. She is an athlete, but that's not what those photographs are. And so she's the one who's getting all of the money. And so this is one of these, I think, unintended consequences. There are a lot of, Tara Vander Veer, the revered coach at Stanford Basketball, says, "This is not what I fought 40 years for," you know, is moments like this. You know, there are studies out there. I'm actually on a faculty advisor for a master's thesis right now that's asking these types of questions. And this student has done great work and done great analysis of the data. And there is a correlation between publicizing women's sports and the popularity of women's sports. So if we, as So if we as a society, if we as a university or, uh, as a state, want to popularize women's sports, we just need to get them in front of people's eyes more. Let them know that these events, they are, they are happening. Look, unfortunately, we're fighting four hundred years of ideas about, uh, you know, uh, female athleticism or, 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 or the lack of athleticism. These ideas have changed tremendously in our lifetimes, right? Since the passage of, of, of Title IX. But I think more than anything, it's, it's, it's putting the money out there to get people, let people know it's there, to advertise basketball, uh, to advertise field hockey, to advertise rowing. I mean, I share your, your, your interest in women's sports. I assure you, some of the most, um, impressive students that I have come across at this university, I'm just going to pick one team, the rowers. Those female rowers at this university, they are hardworking and they do it all without any glory. You know, there's, there's, there's no one cheering them on after a particularly well-executed stroke, uh, in, in, in rowing. And I am so impressed with them. So it's, it's, it's putting our money where our, where our mouth is.
All right. All right, we're going to wrap up. Professor Andrews, if you do it in mind, there may be some trustees here that have some questions from you. We've got one that worked for Dean Smith, um, on the basketball team. He may want to, uh, say something to you.
Happy to stick around.
But I, I do want to kind of keep us on, on pace. So, uh, let's take a ten-minute break. Thank you, Professor Andrews. We'll come back in ten minutes. Hey, trustees, thank you for coming back to order. I think we'll be able to move fairly quickly from here forward. I am going to rearrange with permission of the board, uh, a little bit of the schedule. And I'm going to move Audit Compliance and Risk Management to the end of the open session prior to going into closed session. And I'm going to call on, uh, Vice Chair of the Board and Chair of the Budget and Finance and Infrastructure Committee, uh, Trustee John Pryor for budget report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This report covers items discussed during the Committee on Budget, Finance, and Infrastructure. Yesterday, March twenty-second, the committee considered an approved request for design approval and demolition approval. Detailed information about each request is available in Board Effect. These items were approved by the board as part of the consent agenda this morning. The committee voted to recommend the postponement of its approval of the request for property acquisition by lease for the Leinberger Cancer Center and has requested additional information from the School of Medicine on this request. Do I hear a motion to approve this approval request?
Uh, I'm so moved. Do I have a second? I'm sorry, John.
Yep, okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Committee also reviewed the university all-funds budget and voted to postpone consideration of the budget until a later date certain prior to April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chair Pryor. I'll now turn, turn it over to, uh, Dr. Perrin Jones, Trustee Jones, on a report from Strategic Initiatives.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Bolick and Board of Trustees members, this report covers items discussed during the meeting of the Committee on Strategic Initiatives yesterday, Jan. March twenty-second. The committee considered and approved a resolution in support of the university's commitment to and compliance with Section three hundred point five point one of the UNC Policy Manual. This resolution requires a vote by this board. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution? Can I get a second? Um, all in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, the, uh, resolution is approved by the board. The committee also heard an update on the university's Career Development and Life Skills Working Group from Mindy Story, Associate Provost for Student Leadership. Lastly, the, the committee heard a truncated informational report from Dr. Erin Bakkenheimer, Executive Director, Student Development and Community Partnerships, about faith-based groups on campus. Because they were cut short, I do plan to invite that group back, um, to the May meeting so they can finish their presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This concludes my remarks.
Thank you, uh, Trustee Jones. At this point, I'd call on, uh, Chairman Ally Ray McCullen of the External Relations for a report on open session items. On open session items, and then when we go to close, you can address the closed session items. Thank you, Chairman McCullen. Appreciate that. Now I'll call on, uh, Marty Codis, Chairman of the, uh, Trustee Codis is Chairman of the Audit Compliance and Risk Management Committee. Chairman Codis.
This report covers items that are discussed during the meeting of the Committee on Audit, Compliance, and Risk Management yesterday, March twenty-second. Committee's first agenda item was to review and approve proposed revisions to the Audit, Compliance, and Risk Management Committee Charter and Office of, uh, Internal Audit Charter. Committee did not consider that item in lieu of the full board's consideration of them today. And Dean Weber is here to present those proposed revisions. Dean Weber?
Thank you, Dean.
Thank you. I'll just be brief. Uh, I believe copies of the revised agendas were just, are being distributed right now. Documents contain, uh, redlined version of text deletions and text additions. Within the Audit, uh, Office of Internal Audit Charter, the, the changes are minor and really just reflective to incorporate practices that are already occurring and just to memorialize those within the charter. The second, uh, charter is the, uh, Audit, Compliance, and Risk Management Committee Charter. Here again, housekeeping revisions to many areas within that charter. The main change comes within item, uh, Section six F, and it provides clarifying language addressing, uh, the process for the committee to present additional audit items being special projects or consultative engagements to the Office of Internal Audit for completion.
And to clarify, these modifications were initiated, uh, by both, uh, Dean and, uh, Legal, to, to make us more compliant. Is there any questions?
Yeah, yeah. May I speak to this just briefly? So if, if, and Chancellor, if you want to jump in on this as well, it'd be appreciated. At the last board meeting, I made a mention to the fact that, um, uh, I had had a conversation with the Chancellor and his team about making sure that, uh, Dean and his team, and Dean, Dean, as we, we well know, your team has, uh, it does a fantastic job. But, but you, you only have so many resources in your office. And we wanted to, uh, the Chancellor and I had had this discussion about wanting to clarify sort of the line of communication and, and in your workload in terms of directing that. And I think Chair Codis has worked really diligently on this, uh, as Chairman of the Committee. So I want to thank you for your work on this. And that is what, what it amounts to on the Audit Charter is they're basically, you know, a board, our board by, by university policy acts, um, as a group. So, uh, we have, we, we, we don't act as, as particular individuals, except occasionally within, within individual board matters. But as it relates to external stuff, we act as a board. And, and we also have delegated authority ability as a board. So what, you know, this would provide the initiation of special project audit, uh, that would, that would come outside of Dean's normal. So you have your normal work plan and you go through your work plan and that initiates an audit, correct?
That's correct.
There are other ways to initiate an audit. One would be, and this charter allows for, and, and assumes and presumes the Chancellor will initiate an audit. If, if he or she, whoever is in that role, in this case, Kevin, if, if Chancellor Guskos wants to initiate audit, he has that authority. It also, um, in the oversight, uh, role of the board would, uh, give the committee acting as a committee the authority to, uh, initiate a special projects audit have to be done as a committee. And, and it, it also presumes and, and has a provision to where board members, uh, can, and should communicate to the Audit and Risk Committee with respect to issues that they may have, uh, have concerns about. That correct, Ms. Pratt, our attorney? Okay, I wanted to make sure I was accurate about that. I, I think it's a good document. There's been a lot of work done, our legal team on it, and Chairman Codis has done a tremendous amount of work on it. Thank you, sir, for that amount of work. Uh, and I know members of the Audit and Risk Committee have looked at this and talked about it, uh, in, in one-on-one conversations as well. So, uh, Dean, have I missed anything or would you like to add anything to that summary?
I'm sorry, you summarized it well. We welcome the opportunity to take on additional projects. And this just defines a clear roadmap and structure to bring those forth to our department for, for initiation.
It prevents sort of a peppering of Dean's office with, with generalized requests. Mr. Chancellor, do you want to say anything on that?
No, I, I appreciate the clarification on this. And, uh, and so that a request coming from a, an individual trustee would be discussed with Chancellor in consultation and then, um, would take it, uh, I would take it to, in this case, trustee Codis is chairing that committee. Is that, that's my understanding.
And, and would be reviewed and approved by the committee.
Right. Okay. That's.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you, Chairman Codis, for allowing me the opportunity to speak on that. I, I wanted to back up all your hard work on this.
Do we need to vote on that? Okay. So do I hear a motion to approve the revisions to the, um, Audit, Compliance, and Risk Management Committee Charter as well as the Office of Internal Audit Charter? Trustee Davis?
Second.
And, uh, seconded by, um, Chair Bolick. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Chair Bolick, did you want to move any of these items to after closed session?
Um, there's, there is, there's an item. I know that there, there may be some, uh, need to have discussion in closed session. If that's okay, we'll move that item to closed session.
Okay. In addition, the committee received an information report pursuant to Section three hundred dot eight dot five of the UNC Policy Manual from Vice Chancellor for, uh, Finance and Budget, Nate Kudoffman. And the committee also heard an update on campus security from Vice Chancellor for Institutional Integrity and Risk Management. Vice Chancellor Battle and his team have done a, a great job really moving to accelerate the timing along with the Chancellor, uh, for finding, uh, resources to accomplish the additional security measures. Uh, and they gave us an update on that. And finally, the committee, uh, received a follow-up briefing on fiscal year twenty twenty-two audit projects from Chief Audit Officer Dean Weber, um, including a discussion of, uh, campus tours. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This concludes my remarks. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Chairman Codis. For clarification, um, on closed session, um, just to reiterate, to go into closed session for items, uh, primarily that deal with personnel and receiving advice and counsel from our, our, our legal team, uh, Mr. Marshall and Ms. Pratt. And so, um, there, there's an item on the, uh, on, on the Audit, Compliance, and Risk Management that committee members have asked for legal advice on. So I'm gonna, uh, add that to the closed session, uh, agenda, and we'll report on that following closed session. And there are also personnel items because of time constraints during the committee. And, and we have to discuss the personnel matters in full board anyway. So we did move those to, uh, our full board closed session in the interest of time yesterday. And in addition to that, we, uh, anticipate having, uh, additional legal updates from our general counsel. So those will be the areas of discussion in closed session. Think I've got that right. So at this time, I'll call on Secretary Turner for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board convening closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes, Section one four three dash three one eight point one one, A one, to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential information, and also pursuant to Section one four three dash three one eight point one one, A two, A three, A five, A six, and A seven.
There's a motion on the floor. Do I have a second to that? I have a second from, uh, Trustee Brian. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. We'll, we'll be in closed session. So with the appropriate people, um, you know, I guess, have to leave the room and those who were necessary, please. We're back in open session. Thank you, um, members of the board. Turn it over at this point to the Chair of the University Affairs Committee, Rob Bryant.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Members of Board Trustees, this report covers items we discussed yesterday in the commu, in the Committee on University Affairs as well as items discussed in closed session this morning slash afternoon. In open session yesterday, the committee heard an update from Chair of the Faculty, Mimi Chapman. And the committee decided not to meet in closed session until today. In the full board's closed session today, we discussed requested personnel action items, including seventeen promotions, conferring tenure, three new appointments, conferring tenure, and seven other personnel actions. The promotions and appointments only of that part. Promotions and appointments require our vote now. On behalf of the committee, I move that the Board of Trustees vote to approve the requested final personnel action items, including seventeen promotions, conferring tenure, and three new appointments.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
We've got a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, that passes. Those will be posted on the website in within an hour, consistent with our policy. Now I'd like to call on trustee Codis from the Risk and Management. We had a, we had an item that came off of the out of the committee. And is there a motion to postpone consideration for the whole board until? Yeah, we had, we had announced a a motion to postpone consideration of the budget until sometime in April. We're tentatively thinking that will be the 27th, but we'll send out official notice on that pursuant to statute and requirements. But so I have a motion to postpone consideration of that item. And I have a second. All those in, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, that passes. One quick motion. I know that trustee Davis, I'm, you're you're walking on a quick motion. It's a technical change to the Board of Visitors Charter based on our discussions. And trustee Davis, I'll call on you at this time, please. Great. So would, do I have a second to that? I have a second. So on the discussion, the way I understand it is Vice Chancellor Andrician and Ms. Douglas had talked with Board of Visitors that it made sense to keep the chair on to assist with with transition, give some opportunity for additional service. So I don't I personally don't have any problem with that. I think it's fine. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, aye. The ayes have it. We stand adjourned.